I'd like to call today's meeting to order. Most of us are in attendance, so we have established quorum. First thing is I need to establish an oath, or I'm sorry, administer an oath, my bad. For those who are planning to speak at any time during the meeting and if you're not sure, if you're on the fence, it's probably better to take the oath right now rather than having to do it later. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? All I have to say is I do.
I do.
Alright, thank you very much. Disposition of last meeting's minutes, they were sent out by Charlene previously, if you had a moment to review them.
I did.
Oh, Char did send them out, so if you had any issues, don't look to her to correct them.
I move the exception minutes. They're brief, but they're concise. How's that sound?
John knew we're all very busy people, so.
Bullets.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Alright, no opposition? I believe we were all present as well, so that's always a plus. Cases, we do have a couple on the agenda this afternoon. The first one is number 11-07. This is Dan Abdella and Brian Lovise.
We took that one off.
Okay.
They did something else and went through and did a mistake if they're not required some of the way. So that one's okay.
Okay. We're gonna breeze through this meeting today, okay? Number 11-08, still on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Don Linder, Altamonte Drive, not actually familiar where that is located.
University Estates.
It is, okay.
It's near High Point.
It's lot 7B, it's a lot split. John, were you, wanna give us a brief summary?
Yes. Approximately, I don't know what the total acreage is, there's one parcel at the end of Altamonte on the left-hand side that if you go down, it includes the clubhouse, a slab for one of the condos that never got built, and then the remaining land that passed the clubhouse. What they are requesting to do is split that parcel into three parcels where the clubhouse or the slab becomes its own parcel, separate from everything, so that the current or the new property owner can complete it, his own timeline. The clubhouse then would become another parcel, and then the remaining 1.521 acres past the clubhouse would be in its own parcel as well. My understanding is for future development back there extending the condos. The, I believe it's the purchaser, right Matt? You did this?
Yes.
It was actually here.
Purchaser also representing Don Linder in this case.
He can probably fill you in a little bit more.
Okay.
Is this emergency access road the one that is failing?
Correct. Down by where it comes out on the University Boulevard, yes.
Looking.
And then that would be included in the clubhouse parcel?
It's just an access easement there. I don't know the, it's split between the clubhouse parcel and the, on the property line where they're splitting it. The new, I gave everyone a new packet there just a little bit ago, it shows all three parcels, a more recent survey, including the third parcel as well, and you can see where that access easement or emergency easement is there.
Okay, so we have two maps here. One's a site plan of a previous date, and the other one is a.
Probably the best one to look at, this is the one you have, it's got all three.
Okay, so it's basically right now, this is one existing lot.
With the exception of where it says building number 12, that is all currently one parcel, yes.
Right. So the split is breaking up building 12 versus the split?
The split, number 12 was already off on its.
Okay, well already isn't it, so where's the split? That's why I'm saying dividing buildings.
Building number 10.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, the two split lines are.
Oh, so this already, this was like a U.
There'll be the line right there, is a split line, right here.
Okay, yeah.
And then the other one is this line on the emergency access road.
Easement.
Splitting right down the middle a bit.
You mean you're dividing that access road?
Correct.
And currently it's not?
Currently it's not, it's all in parcel.
Alright, so in other words, 30 feet will be on one lot and 30 feet on the other.
Okay.
So who's gonna be responsible for repairing that access road?
With the other 30 feet on?
The access road where it's damaged right now is down the bottom of the hill, and I believe that's Citizens Bank property right there, so.
So it depends who wants to go up or who wants to go down.
I think anyone should go down it right now.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so we're looking at a split from .385 acres and .878, and then if I look at the next map, it looks like you've got other parcels there, is that? The other map's a site plan, is that part of the?
The original.
Which one? This one right here.
It's in the original packet.
What is that all about?
That's just showing what would be the residual, and then Mr. Gajer purchased this over here as well, his goal is to, to some day extend the condo project here and over into here. So this is just kind of, is the guideline, it said you want the whole parcel, looks like at the end, it's really irrelevant.
Okay, it is, okay. So, the building 10 is already built out, building 12 is a pad, clubhouse is.
Building 10 is a slab.
Site, it's a slab, building 12 is built.
Building 12 was built.
Correct, the other way around.
Each one of these buildings up there is already on a lot, similar to the building 10 site there, that .385 acres, that has previously been split, there's 12 different lots up there, the same size or smaller. And building 10, because it was never finished, the slabs there, the plumbing's there, the utilities are all there, it was never, it had never been split because it was still part of the developer's property, which included the clubhouse. And the idea is that the clubhouse and the remaining acreage is gonna become, that's all Citizens Bank, and will actually go to the homeowners association, because the clubhouse is gonna be part of the development, that's not for, you know, purchase or, you know, I can't own the clubhouse, and, I mean, in order to get building 10 purchased, that site, it has to be split off from the clubhouse ground.
Right. I understand that split, I think I'm more or less confused by the splitting at the easement, why we, why split the lot to the south there off from the east?
That I can't speak to, that's where they wanted to do it, that was their proposal.
And also, I hear that you're saying you're fairly comfortable with the building 10 division, but is anybody here representing the homeownership, homeowners association? Is this a gift? Is this not a gift?
As far as what, the clubhouse parcel? What I can, what I can speak to is only what I've been told and know, is that Citizens Bank now owns all that, all the property up.
So all these lots in question?
Citizens Bank owns all the green. There is an agreement that was put in place with University Estates and Dr. Connerd, that once everything was done, the green space and a lot of these lots would be handed over and given control to the homeowners association. So that's still the plan, I mean, they really can't change, the clubhouse is used by all the condos up there. That clubhouse is specific to those condo owners, and is, and they're, you know, they have a contract to use that, they're allowed to use it, it can't be taken away, and Citizens Bank now owns that, because they took over all Dr. Connerd's property. So that eventually has to go back to the homeowners association.
Are there two separate homeowners associations at the University Estates?
There are two separate homeowners associations up there, I can't speak greatly to those, but one is the condos homeowners association, and one is the remaining homeowners association, yes.
I mean, just this year, there have been issues that have been brought to my attention regarding the maintenance of these common spaces, so.
I think there's always been issues with maintenance, the areas up there. I don't know what that.
Okay, so, okay, building 12 is already built out, that's owned by?
They're fee simple. Each individual unit's held individually by the.
That's a condo.
Yeah, they're fee simple condos, and all the property that they sit on around them would be owned by this, or the homeowners association, once it's formed or developed or turned into them, once everything can get turned over to them, and I think that's the reason they're trying to do this. Am I correct?
Yes.
So it's basically the development of the lots, then, the lots to the south then and lot 10 would be at the homeowners association discretion, I mean, they could.
Lot 10, when it's finished, I don't know, Mr. Gajer can speak to that, are you gonna turn that over to the association, or how does that work when it gets done?
Yeah, it would have to be turned over, I mean, they, building 10 is non-existent at this point in time.
Well, I guess there was a lot that is.
It's a slab, yeah.
Slab with pipes coming out.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Well, I guess what is, if the clubhouse and building 10 and the lot to the south are all going to the homeowners association?
Eventually.
Why split?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we just want, wait till the homeowners association determines what they want to develop, 'cause.
The lot to the south, does that wanna be part of the association, the 1.5 acres after you develop it and across the street?
I did not buy lot, the 1.521 acres is not part of my purchase, nor the clubhouse. Building site 10 is.
Oh, so you're.
I'm only buying building site 10 at this current time. I bought seven remaining condominiums.
You have another map.
So you just bought the building and not the land?
Correct, I bought all, I bought all the condominiums that Dr. Connerd still owns, and got four closed on, and Citizens Bank took over, I purchased all of those. In that is the building 10 site, and currently, we've closed and I have money in escrow waiting to get building 10, the building 10 site cleared out.
So then who made the request to get the lot split? 'Cause he can't request lots to be split if he doesn't have the land.
Don Linder, Don Raff, I believe you work with him, yeah?
Yes.
Representing Patai as well.
That's confusing.
Now, I have to, I thought you bought the 1.521 acres as well.
No, the lot 7B is not part of it.
Okay, so we're not looking at the lot split for the 1.5 and the .87. We're looking at the difference between the .385 and the .87.
Well, in essence, you add up all three of those, and then it's two splits off of an existing parcel, the one building, but lot 10, or building 10 site and the clubhouse site is being broke off of the current residual property.
How, how did you sell a parcel that didn't exist, or buy a parcel that didn't exist?
Even buy the parcel, just bought the condo, this lab.
The.
It's not a good deal.
The parcel, there's money in escrow, this parcel has been, it was part of the site plan, has been, was already described, it has just never been split off because it was never developed. All 12 buildings up there had designated lots, they were all described, they've all been done, and then as he built on them, he split them off and.
After it was built.
Yeah, and, and so this one has just never been done. What we're asking here to do is just basically continue the progress that's happened on the other 11 buildings up there. And as far as the 1.521 acres and the .878 acres, I don't, you know, I did not purchase those, but, you know, what I, what I do know is that the clubhouse needs to be its own parcel in order for that to go immediately to the homeowners association, and that 1.52 could be used for future development, may not be green space. I don't have enough information to tell you that, but that would be my assumption here, that 1.52 could be for a future building site or something like that, but the.
Could be for green space too, I mean, it's all hypothetical if you're not.
What's that?
It's all hypothetical if you're not the one owning the.
I'm just, I'm just trying to answer your question, why 1.521 acres?
Yeah, well, I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all, please don't feel that way, I mean, I think it's just that we're asking more of you than you're, than the information that you're even providing.
Citizens Bank will retain ownership of the 1.521 acres split there, and eventually, in the near future, hopefully, there are negotiations now to give the clubhouse parcel to the homeowners association.
Right.
That, I don't, I don't know why, I can't answer why the split is 1.521, but the clubhouse parcel needs to be given to the homeowners association to give them control of that, so it needs to be split off as well. That 1.52 can be sold later on.
Okay.
I just put off, it's because of the development. Man, it's fine. I just mentioned, I felt more comfortable with just looking at the building 10 site, and not even considering.
You know, we've had this happen before, where, you know, there's more than what we're supposed to be addressing, and then all of a sudden it becomes like, hey, you know, you've seen this and you've already approved it. I'd be uncomfortable on a whole, and I surely would like to hear from someone from the homeowners association, or whoever represents.
Homeowners association is not involved in this.
Well, why split a lot that's gonna be given to them?
So this is, Citizens Bank is the owner of this property, and I'm buying it.
I thought you were just buying building 10 and not the land.
No, I'm buying building, the building 10 site, .385 acres.
Okay, so that's, I was confused. So you're buying this, you're buying the clubhouse?
No.
Clubhouse reverts to?
The building 10 site only.
To the association, right?
Citizens Bank currently owns the clubhouse. Whether they give it to the association or not, I can't speak to, but that is the plan.
Right, and they do own the 1.5 acres as well.
They do.
Okay.
But this has been created, what is the existing?
The existing is with that.
Add all three of them together, it's like four acres.
Yeah, this one doesn't exist, neither does this little line.
1.521 plus 8.78 plus 3.85.
There's one thing except for that.
I'm still not gathering why the access road is divided.
Do you think it's a bad idea to divide this access road, a road in half?
Sure.
Yeah, it seems like if it's emergency access road, just put it under the clubhouse is already a shared facility, but the, the access under the, the homeowners association as opposed to.
So who pays taxes on it and maintains it?
Yeah.
Um, hmm.
Well, without a representative from the Citizens Bank here.
I'm representing Citizens Bank today.
You are?
I thought you were representing Don Linder.
Who's representing Citizens Bank?
Foxy Fox.
The, Paul, it looks like the current access road coming, emergency access road coming up there is already split all the way up through as well. I mean, I don't have any surveys to prove that, but it's right on that common line that's coming up through there.
Okay, if, you got it, if you're representing Citizens Bank, and then you've stated you don't know, you believe or maybe that Citizens Bank will indeed be transferring this property to the homeownership.
Citizens Bank is currently in negotiations with the homeowners association as to what properties will be given to them and what won't, if there's any fee associated with that or not. The clubhouse must go to the homeowners association in some way, shape, or form. As to the exact date, there's nobody at Citizens Bank that can tell you that, until those negotiations are done with the homeowners association.
So it's possible that what's being presented today won't be regarding what is agreed upon or what is negotiated, or?
I believe what's being presented today is just to split these lots for Citizens Bank. It's simply a request by Citizens Bank to take the 4-point sum acres and split it into these three lots.
See, I guess the issue that I think we're struggling with is, we could say, yeah, sounds good, do the lot split, and it may actually have a negative impact on development, because they may say, oh, really? That's the size of the lot now? We're not interested, and it may just never get developed. Unless we actually know why we're splitting it, what could be the potential use of that site is, you know, not a good reason for us to, to split the lot.
You're talking about the 1.5?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I think the one, the one. The lot split to the north is so confined, there's not much else that can happen there.
Do you plan on building, on developing the building 10 site?
Yeah, just like the other sites that are up there, yes. I mean, the slabs there, the plumbing's there, there's not much else, it's pretty much, the use is determined.
Beyond that, you can't speak to what the final intentions would be for the rest of the remaining property that you want to split?
The clubhouse needs to be split off in some way, shape, or form so that the homeowners association can take control of that.
Right, I mean, they could right now.
But then they would be getting the whole four acres, and there's development potential there.
2.784, there's all three parcels.
It used to be four acres, right, building 12 is out and stuff, but the 1.52 acres is, is not going to go with the clubhouse to the homeowners association.
The concept, if I understand what you, you mentioned, that the concept was, as these all got built, eventually the clubhouse would be turned over, what you're telling me is prematurely, the bank wants to turn the clubhouse over to the neighborhood association?
The Citizens Bank and the homeowners association are currently talking about the transfer of the clubhouse to the homeowners association. Citizens Bank is not a developer, and they really don't wanna hold these anymore than they have to, so if they can begin to turn some things over to the homeowners association now, it benefits them to do so. They're not the original developer, I mean, you guys know that.
Yeah, we're not developers here.
Yeah, and so, I mean, so there may be some things happen that were gonna happen after everything was completed, they may begin to turn some of that over, over now to the homeowners association, and that's what they're talking to the homeowners association about. The homeowners association currently is maintaining and mowing the grass around the condos, the clubhouse, they maintain the clubhouse, the pool, and all that kinda stuff. So the homeowners association is essentially doing the maintenance and doing what they're going to have to do anyway. It's just that Citizens Bank currently, now, currently owns the clubhouse, because they are the developer now, whether they wanna be or not, they're the developer now.
And building 10 there.
And building 10.
Except you're gonna buy it. Where's the slip on all this? Does it go past 12 or 10?
Slip is behind building 10 and up behind buildings 6 and 8.
Stops at 10?
Just a little bit, it stops at 10, and it kind of is not behind building 8, but then it picks up again on the other side, so there's two slips per se.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't look closely, I guess. And the homeowners association's responsible for that?
No, Citizens Bank is responsible for the slip. Contractually and binding, they are responsible for those slips.
Well, then is the biggest issue, this splitting of the easement?
No, I'm still uncomfortable. If you, if you divide, if we approve this for the clubhouse parcel, that becomes a standalone parcel, correct?
The clubhouse becomes a standalone parcel, and I understand your opinion of having the homeowners association, are they aware that this 1.521 is being split off of the clubhouse? Maybe they thought it was for recreational land for themselves, so having them here to speak to that might not.
That has always been, that, that property and the property across Altamonte Drive, Altamonte Drive has always been develop, developable property. We've had offers on it from people to build assisted livings up there, that property has always been for some type of future development.
I heard you say that the homeowners association are maintaining these grounds now, what had reached my ears was that this was a point of contention, in terms of people were just paying out of pocket, hiring, you know, contract work to come up and do that, that in the past, as they paid dues, that was supposed to have been taken care of previously, so I, that, that's.
I'm not sure when you would have heard that, or who you would have heard that from, but the, the homeowners association is maintaining the landscape and the grass, and, I mean, the homeowners association has been keeping up their end of the, of their, of their duties up there. They may, they may wish that they didn't, I mean, there may be a point in time that somebody might have done some landscaping, because they wanted specific landscaping done, or certain flowers put in, but the homeowners association has been maintaining those lots up there.
And again, I may be speaking to the other homeowners association.
That could be too, that, now that, that you would have a very valid point on, yes. Yes. The homeowners association on the condos, take the monthly fees, and, I mean, they actually maintain, they pay the water and the sewer for all condos and all the lawn care and the exterior of the buildings, and they've done a pretty good job. In the condo area, yes, if you want to get to the other homeowners association.
I think that's what it was.
I think you could probably question whether it even exists within the guidelines of what it's supposed to be.
Do you, one other question, the site plan that was put in the original packet from University Estates, do you know when that's, it's not dated, do you know when that's from?
I, I received the most current one this morning, or yesterday, and that's the one I passed out to you today. That site plan that they gave me before I included in the package, maybe I should not if it's confusing you.
Well, no, I'm not confusing, I mean, I think that it does show that what is being suggested is that, you know, it's lot 132.
Right, there's, you see where the cul-de-sac is? It's my understanding that, that if you're coming down Altamonte, you pass the last structure, which is building 11, the, there's proposal for a cul-de-sac to be built there, that currently is not there.
Right.
And then, you know, there, I guess the idea in the future, from what I've been told, is to tie the residual left off of this parcel we're discussing today with that entire parcel on the other side of Altamonte, and making it all basically one property for future development.
Right. This, this note here, so I mean, I guess they've already, were planning on one day this would be its own separate lot, what is being, the same thing that's being requested now.
I know there's been some discussion of housing built up there for assisted living, Don Linder's talked about doing something that.
An assisted living project?
Was it that, or just for?
Senior housing?
There's senior housing, there's a potential for that.
Okay.
I mean, there's nothing in stone right now, but there's, there are people looking to do that.
And this, this land is not part of that?
No, it's across.
I think it's the other side, yeah.
The other parcel, okay.
Yeah, it's across the way.
Question, it's kind of a stupid question, I'm looking at it, it looks like it works, but between these parcel cuts, we have that 60% permanent building area, 40% permanent, a fast look at this looks like it fits, and it will not, by splitting this, we will not make it non-conforming, is that the case?
That's a good question, on the clubhouse area, I never checked it to see, but.
Oh, hey, I'm looking at it, I'm measuring little boxes here by eye, it looks like it's good to go, but I need to ask that question, just because the rules have changed since the original drawings.
Yeah, I, that's a good question, I did not check it, so I don't know.
And I know probably site 10 is already, since a pad was built, it probably grandfathered in, I'm assuming that, and that also looks like it's, it's less than 60%, which is good to go.
Yeah, it does look like it, because they both look and appear as if they are, correct?
I just have to ask the question.
Right, I agree.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if we indeed have something in writing from the homeowners association.
The homeowners association is not involved in this, it's a landowner asking for a lot split.
They're asking for two lot splits.
Okay, they're asking for two lot splits.
Okay.
You want, you want representation from someone who might one day be a recipient of some of this ground, possibly, to weigh in on this, and this is Citizens Bank, a developer and landowner, asking for two lot splits of something they currently own.
I think you volunteered that information about the homeowners association giving the clubhouse split.
That's the reason, that's the reason for the clubhouse needing to be on its own parcel, yes. So that can be facilitated.
Right. I have to agree with Paul on the, the access road, emergency access road being split in half.
Except I hear John telling me that that's that way.
It looks like, you know, I don't have a survey to prove it, but it looks like, and Andy can speak probably better to that, I don't think that's uncommon.
No, I don't think that's uncommon either.
Or even to be split on both sides.
I don't have a problem with easement being split, I mean, I think the issue I have is that one side's gonna be a sort of non-entity, potentially, right now, it's all the same entity that's gonna hold, own both lots, right now it works out fine.
But.
Association that's responsible for a section.
That may not like to do it.
Right.
Or don't have the means to do it.
Right.
I understand, I guess that's my concern too. And since we're drawing lines anyway, that's, that comes to a question of where to draw that line.
Feel comfortable in terms of just considering the building 10 site?
That's where I was gonna go with this, would, if, but right now, if we were to actually do this as two applications, and we do the .385 split to get that slab separated so he can continue moving on that, and then maybe get the homeowners association in here just to acknowledge that they know that the rest of that land's being broken off of the clubhouse, 'cause they may, I hear what you're saying, but for them to say it might be a good thing, hey, we know it's, we know it's disappearing from us, and we're only taking the clubhouse, and just do this as basically two applications, and then when we can, then come back in, and we can do the other part of it next time, or with.
Give us an opportunity to clarify the bottom.
Sure.
So I would move that we approve. So I would move that we, we approve the lot split of building ten site away from the clubhouse parcel at this point in time. But my conditions are that it does, and I assume it covers the 40%, 60% rule. And again, I, I remember the interpretation was, if the foundation's there, it's grandfathered in because construction is started.
And if he even decides to stay with that slab, I mean, it's going to need a new permit as well, so, to continue because it has, nothing's been going on on it for over a year now. So when he does start construction, he'll have to get a new permit with us. So, but yes, that, that condition's fine. I can check that when I get back to the office.
Are there any other conditions we need to put together?
I don't, I don't think so, none on those two. I mean, basically be the two, uh, England surveying, the legal description for the clubhouse parcel and the legal description for building ten parcel would be accepted. We would not accept, you know, the legal description for, I'm not sure if it's included. I think it's included in your update. Legal description for lot seven B. So actually, yeah, it is just that one legal description of not even the clubhouse parcel, but building ten parcel.
Okay. So I'll make that motion. If that's adequate wording.
No, I just want to see what the request is. Split unfinished condo.
They're asking for one parcel subdivision.
We'll have a new application.
This is according to the site, previous site plan.
I would second that motion.
All right, so there's a second motion to accept the, um, legal description for building ten site to, the reason for request is split unfinished condo from clubhouse. We will deny the request to split the remaining vacant land from clubhouse however, which is legal description for the clubhouse parcel and for the lot seven B. There was a motion to second. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, any opposition?
Have Don get with me on the other, we'll get it, figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Halfway there.
All right, there's no other further discussion on that item or any other cases. We move on to communications, the next part of the agenda. Wireless telecommunication, telecommunications facility ordinance. Paul Lowick, city planner, has been drafting and recently submitted the latest draft version of it. Um, he did, I think, provide that just ahead of time earlier this week or ended last week for us to review. We also provided a packet in front of us right now. Paul, did you want to, again, just could provide a brief summary for those who aren't as familiar with this document?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Again, this, this ordinance, we've been, this issue, I suppose, we've been working on this off and on for over a year now. Um, the version you have in your hands should be dated October 18th, 2011. Um, I made very few changes from the previous version. Specific to it, there was a few typos and I did add, based on some feedback that I received well over a year ago, that's also in compliance with our comprehensive plan. Um, on page 12, if you'd like to refer to that, uh, at the bottom under section F, and this is in relation to location of wireless facilities, um, which, before that, we have steps with how to approve it and how it's reviewed and where our preferences are. Uh, I added that number three, the very last line on that page, um, based on some feedback that we had received, pointing out that the city does own some significant nature preserves and that we would, um, there's, some of those already have these restrictions on them from ODNR money that was given to us to purchase them, that, which already says that we wouldn't be able to do this, uh, but I thought we should build that in just to be in compliance with that as well as the comprehensive plans, discussion of used sheds and those issues. Um, other than that, it was a few typos. Uh, I did, based on our conversation from about a month ago, uh, I did look into the issue of amateur radio and ham radios, and I know we did receive some communication from a local ham radio organization and I found some information at the state and federal levels. This ordinance, I left it as an exemption, um, as we had previously had it. Um, I think you should have a copy of communication from the Annapolis area ham radio organization, um, which does show the same information that I found, that, um, they, at this, it is our responsibility as a community to show, uh, to accommodate amateur radio. And because of that, I, I didn't, I thought it was best that we leave it as an exemption. If the planning commission would like to change that, that is fine. From my perspective, uh, we just need to make sure that we're within that reasonable accommodation window and to me, that's vague enough that I thought we should just leave it out. Um, as well, this is something that, because it's not a change to our zoning code, um, we can begin moving this forward to council and if we think that needs to be added in at council level, then council could determine that. Specific to the ordinance though, um, just a, a summary of what's in it, um, just a couple of points to let you guys, remind everybody of what is contained in this pretty detailed ordinance. Uh, the ordinance provides for expert review of the application before the planning commission or council would approve it or deny it. That expert review would provide technical information on the aspects of the proof of need, the height, the location, as well as looking at alternatives to make sure that all those things are being met and we get expert engineering review that would provide, could say that maybe there's an alternative or maybe this thing could actually be less based upon their statement of need and what they're trying to, to accomplish. Uh, it's also in accordance with our comprehensive plan. It creates a clear special use permit process for all applicants, so there's no question as to what's expected of them. Um, in relation to our comprehensive plan, it also focuses on the aesthetics and the visual impacts. It encourages stealth technologies and co-locations so that we minimize the proliferation of towers as well as any negative impacts to our, to our landscape views. With that, it requires a detailed visual impact assessment, um, which would, which would, uh, provide photographs of, um, of the tower location from anywhere from 15 to 20 locations around the city. The planning commission could specifically tell an applicant where they think they should be taking photographs from, so we'd have that in the record.
That's on page 10, one, zone of visible, map visibility.
Yes, yeah. Um, it also includes a balloon test, um, based on the planning commission's request. Uh, the ordinance was written to include two balloon tests, one on a weekend and one on a weekday. Those balloon tests would need to get 14 days' public notice that it's going to happen in a newspaper. And then, of course, we'd be announcing that on the city's website and the mayor's press conference, um, so we can get feedback from citizens about that.
And then hope the wind don't blow.
And hope the wind doesn't blow, right. Um, it, it also requires the applicant to demonstrate the actual need for the facility. Um, any current facilities must come into compliance at the time of a, a visible modification being done. It does allow for repairs and maintenance. Uh, it restricts, uh, the opportunity to light a tower, um, only to that being required by the Federal Aviation Administration. Um, it's a very public process. Uh, it builds in requirements for inspections on a three-year basis for guide wire towers and five years for monopole. It addresses the abandonment of a tower, uh, so that somebody just can't walk away from it and leave a tower standing for the next 100 years. It also requires that the applicant demonstrate that they have the bonding and the insurance needed, um, for long-term in case something should happen with the tower that they have to damage to both people and property should anything happen, so. And that's a basic summary of it.
Okay.
Yeah, this will be a new chapter. By the way, I did, the, the chapter number, I, I just chose that randomly because, uh, chapter 36 is not an existing chapter in city code. Um, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how chapter numbers are assigned, um, so I just chose that one.
Good question. I think I've seen, there is some kind of structure for various chapters where to shoot it in, but I couldn't tell you what.
Yeah.
I'm going to go on 36. Um, two things. One, the, the exemption for the private one is section, page...
It's, uh, three.
3607, page five, six, is that it?
Yeah.
Are the ham radios done?
Nobody calls it ham anymore, do they? Oh, you do?
Do you still have Hamfest?
Okay.
Where's Hamfest these days?
Community Center.
Community Center.
Okay. I remember going to one or two, just didn't fully out my league with all the electronics.
So this is a licensed amateur radio or it could still be the private citizen bands? They're both excluded, so.
Uh, it's on page six, D.
Okay.
Facilities exclusive for private, non-commercial radio and television reception and private citizens bands, licensed amateur radio and other similar non-commercial telecommunications.
And the other part is, we, I see you have fines attached in here. Do you have actually numbers and amounts?
I did not.
Okay, so that has to be put in eventually.
Right.
A lot of times council puts in fines separately anyway. You probably need some advice on that.
I was thinking law director.
Law director.
First one on there about fees, Paul.
Application fees.
On exemptions, uh, A, the city's fire, police, department of transportation, uh, does that have to at least be run by council?
Council would have to approve this as a whole.
Okay, so in other words...
I'll be fighting for that, so.
So in other words, there would be a public forum for the discussion about that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we want to take, uh, opportunity to re, uh, make sure everyone's read this over pretty thoroughly and, um, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't come to a vote by the next, uh, meeting unless there are some issues that come up and we can address those at that meeting as well.
Did anybody from the, I don't think there's going to be an issue, but since they're here, I don't know if the representatives from ham radio wanted to come up and address the, the commission for anything?
As long as exclusion remains in.
Okay.
Take your time.
Okay.
And we can get this on the website if it isn't there already, right?
Uh, this version hasn't been uploaded yet.
Okay. And, uh...
Yeah.
Get Ron Forrest on it too, just in case, instead of I.
Yeah, I, I'm not as concerned about the, the fine or figuring out those sort of issues. I'd rather leave that in city councils purvey.
Yeah, makes sense.
Before, you know, in other words, I wouldn't want that, you know, waiting for a review by legal counsel before recommending it.
You're saying we don't have to wait for that?
I, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think I would go through all those sort of checks and bounces in the city council as well. I mean, unless there are issues that, I mean, that's a personal, if other commission members have, you know, reservations about that, then we can discuss that too.
Because it's not in titled, it's not part of the zoning code, technically, if the planning commission doesn't even want to vote on it, you don't even have to. Um, you know, if everything's okay with it, more or less, we can begin moving it up to city council if that's, if, but if the planning commission would like to do an official vote on it in two weeks, that's fine as well.
I, I think I just, because the special use permit would be going to us sort of at the beginning onset anyway.
Right, right.
It seems like, I, I'd want to have a vote just on the record to know...
Sure.
Where we sit, but I understand what you're saying.
For a vote next, next meeting.
I, I, unless, I mean, anyone can bring it to a vote now, but I, I feel like, I just want to make sure everyone's had a, a good opportunity to look at it. I mean, I know we've seen it in, in different iterations before prior to this and so.
That's fine.
Appreciate it, Paul. Looks great.
Thanks.